Everyone, to the March 8th City Council Work Session and Meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency, welcome to everyone here and at home. The first item we have in our work session is the -- did we have items of the --
Items?
Yes, we have items. I'm on the wrong -- so I didn't look right. Items of -- reports and items of interest to the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I'll just start out, and I didn't want this meeting to go by since I know we're heading into our break time without us all having the public opportunity. Thanks, Susan Muir. That's you over there.[51.46][51.46](Laughter). As everybody probably knows from reading it in the paper, she's accepted a new job in Mount Angel, and we want to congratulate her. We're sorry she's leaving us, but we wish her all the best, and we just want to thank you for your good service to our community. So let's give it up.[71.11][71.11](Applause). All right. Transitions, transitions. I want to mention the successful United Front trip that we took, seems like months ago already, just a week ago, and with the county and Springfield School, City, Parks, Coburg, Lane Transit District received -- had a lot of very good meetings and a lot of support from our congressional delegation and really good advice from various agencies that can help us get our work done. So I think it was a very successful meeting. I guess the biggest thing for me out of that was a understanding of the need for dealing with some of our transit issues and the loss of bus routes, and I'm hoping we'll see something move along fast enough that it can help with this current situation. And I guess the other part is that the secure rural school solution still looks difficult, but they'll continue to work on that. The other things I wanted to mention was the Rail Summit yesterday. I want to thank Brenda Wilson from the city, who was one of the chief organizers of that, and Greg Evans from LCC, and all the other folks who were involved. We had a great turnout, a couple hundred folks, and leaders from across the state, ODOT, OTC, people really taking very seriously the move towards making us have a better transit -- a better rail system in -- down our corridor and looking at higher speed or high-speed rail. So just a beginning step, but everybody seems very interested in wanting to move it. We also recognize former Mayor Ruth Bascom for her work in regard to the rail a few years back when we had a lot of energy behind it. Now, I think the whole country's got a lot of energy behind it, so the possibilities are there, and we just need to do our part to get our plans in place because we do have opportunities out there. I'll finish up by saying this morning I did a press conference on the census, and it's very important that people fill out their census forms and be counted because being counted for the census brings money for roads and schools, health care services, all the things that we need in our community. So just encourage everyone to fill out their census form. All right, Betty.
We got a hat if we fill it up?
I'll give it to you, Betty.
Thank you.[240.15][240.15](Laughter). Okay, I'll start with the Rail Conference, Rail Summit, since I was there also.
Thank you for that, too.
And it was really great. There was such a lot of energy in the room and really good people there. In addition to the people that Kitty mentioned, Jessica Mummy was there working, and she did a lot for it, too. And it was very interesting things. I suggest that everybody join Aorta. It's a -- I forget what all that stands for, but it's a group pushing for -- oh, Association of Oregon Rail and Transit Advocates, pushing for more rail service. And also, I wanted to mention, and everybody should join that, and everybody should buy vanity license plates because the ODOT is shifting that money to pay for rail. So that's one. We need a match. If we get federal funds, we need 20 percent matching. And they are diverting some flexible funds now, according to the speaker from ODOT, Kelly Taylor. And she said also, if you buy these vanity -- she didn't call it vanity, personal license plates, whatever, with your name on them or whatever you put on them, that money can go into rail, and we really need that for sustainability for thousands of reasons. We need better rail service. Former councillor and current representative Nancy Nathanson conducted one session, and she had some good ideas about not necessarily high speed but faster speed and more trains. And I think the consensus of the group was really, we need more -- immediately, we need more trains and more reliable trains, and those are things that could happen sooner than the 200-mile train. And also Kitty did an excellent job of introducing the thing and closing it. I made a mistake. Well, I didn't mention something last time. I mentioned the Tuolletan Urban Renewal. There was a message from me when I got home that it was the Fire and Rescue District that said no to urban renewal in Tuolletan. And at the time, I read the article, the school district was still thinking about it, but apparently didn't. Crest Drive, some people are happy and some are unhappy, as you've probably all heard. And I've been asked if we could change the design for the remaining work. I don't think that's possible, but I'm passing that along. I went to the Workforce Partnership Board meeting. Some really good people on that board, and they're doing good work. And it's -- if you read the newspaper today, you saw that they're helping to train people for the jobs that will be coming to Junction City. Also, working a lot on internships and helping young people, and it's a really good organization. And I'm glad that I was able to join that instead of -- and take Alan's place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Betty, we all have our part of Aorta's. That's one of our main beings in our body.
Oh, really?[428.41][428.41](Laughter).
So I spent -- I was pretty busy this last couple of weeks. I spoke twice at LCC's volunteerism class, and I got to speak to probably about thirty kiddo -- thirty community members. I shouldn't say kids because they were people who were -- they were adults. And it was very interesting and very -- it was a lot of fun, actually, talking about the way to volunteer and make that your -- and to connect with what's your passion and to get the most that you can out of that situation. So I was really glad to be able to do that. I spent Friday and Saturday at my day job helping sign kids up for the Oregon Health Plan, and I just wanted to bring that up because there actually is -- the Healthy Kids Program actually addresses not only people who qualify for any of the other services that Oregon has to offer, but they do it at a reduced rate. And then if you're a working person and can't afford to buy your insurance through your employer, this is also an opportunity to get your children insured. So I would encourage people to look into that if they're interested. There's going to be a town hall this weekend at Willamette High School. Representative Hoyle and Nathanson will be there, and so will Senator Edwards, talking about this last session. I went to the NAACP dinner with the mayor, and Council Taylor was there, and I'm not sure who else was there, but it was pretty well attended, and it was a lot of fun. The kids are always great entertainment, and I will have to say that three of the four kids that performed were Bethel students. So I was -- that was really -- I was pretty proud about that. I attended JEO in Springfield, as a lot of us did. It was a pretty good -- I really liked those. I don't know how much other people think, but I just liked actually sitting at a table with our other joint elected officials and getting -- creating a relationship with them. Hopefully, while we're on break, I will be meeting with the West 11th Neighbors and Chief Kearns to talk about some concerns they have out in that neck of the woods. And then last, I went to a Trainsong Neighborhood Meeting, and they have elected a new leader. Her name's Nicole, and both them and Bethel have decided to participate in applying to be a part of the SNAPS. And so I'm encouraged at that. So that's all I have. Hope everybody has a good break. And I just want to thank everybody for supporting the resolutions that were on the table on Monday night. I was -- I'm really proud of everybody. Thank you all.
Chris?
Thanks. I want to actually piggyback on something Andrea said about the JEO meeting. I have been increasingly pleased with how well those meetings go. I think it really is a credit to the larger community that when the joint elected officials get together, we're actually productive and working on some good things. I think that's great. And the administrators for each of the jurisdictions also, I think, are doing a great job together, and that should be acknowledged. I also wanted to take the opportunity, because it was such an important issue during my early years on the council, was to see the report on the use of the street bond measure money for repairs. I just am incredibly pleased with how well that has gone, the fact that we were able to get such a tremendous bang for the buck in the first year of that program. We really did a lot of work, and not only just with the street bond money, but in general. The amount of street repair work that we've been doing has just been phenomenal, and I don't think we need to let it go by without recognizing the fact that transportation has been such an incredible problem for so many years, and we are now beginning to get a handle on it. And I'm not only pleased, but I'm incredibly proud that we're able to start doing that, getting a handle on the year-to-year maintenance and also that incredible backlog. And to just let people know, West 18th is on this summer's list. So all those people that are just waiting for that street to get fixed, at least the piece between Chambers and City View is going to be fixed this year. So that, I think, is great. So thank you to all the staff who've worked really hard on that. It's been a major issue, and we're really starting to get traction on it. So that's the city at work.
Alan?
Yeah, speaking of transportation, 24th Avenue is going to be -- I mean, Killiard and Patterson's going to be done around 21st to 24th, so that's another street, pretty big archery for a lot of people to use it. Yeah, I thought the JEO meeting was -- went well. I like having those meetings and having all of us get together. I think it promotes collaboration and coordination with Lane County, Springfield, and Eugene. Tonight, there is a Fairmont Neighborhood Association meeting, 7:00 PM at the Laurelwood Golf Course. Of all things, we're going to talk about parking and the arena, and President Lou Ruier from the UVO is going to be there as well. The MPC, Metropolitan Plane Commission, is meeting is tomorrow, 11:30 to 1:30 at the Eugene Library. There's a public hearing on the stiffew dollars for funding of transportation projects as well. We're going to talk about the Lane County Act, which is the Area Committee on Transportation, which Lane County is establishing by legislation that was passed last session, not the special session, but the one before that. And we're also going to talk about our work program. And then finally, I did two interesting fundraiser events. One was Birth of Three. It was Cirque de Family, and that was really fun, and they raised lots of money. And then Friends of Hendrix Park did a dinner at Aggett Alley. Bistro was very generous and donated 50 percent of their profits for everybody in the neighborhood that came to dinner that night, and I think they raised $1,000 for Hendrix Park, which is, I think, one of our crown jewels of our park system. And starting in April and May is when all those blossoms bloom out, so that's the time to go there. It's just stunning. And then I also want to say my appreciation for the unanimous support for both the resolutions on the Dream Act and the Marine Protection Reserves. I think that was -- spoke highly of our working together and also of our vision.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Sure. My council assignment meetings are actually later in the week and next week, so I'll have to report on those when we come back from break. And I wanted to thank Chris for how well you articulated your thanks for the transportation issues that we've dealt with. I think that was great, and I would like to know that. And then finally, we've been getting for a couple of months now some commendations reports from the Police Department, and I really appreciate that because -- and I appreciate that people call in to say what a good experience they have. It's not very often that I call and thank somebody or thank an employer for some great service that I receive from their employee. And so it's an effort to do that, and I appreciate the citizens that do that, and I really appreciate the Police Department for capturing those and then sharing them with us every month.
George?
Thanks. I went to a Jefferson Westside Neighbors' Meeting last night. They did the neighborhood business, but then there were representatives from 4J were there and people from State Civic Stadium. They had, you know, yet one more public presentation of where they're at to this point, and it's kind of encouraging. I floated the idea -- I really haven't had a lot of time to devote to this, but I'm going to change that and start working to help them work on it. I floated the idea of a levy or a general obligation bond for about 10 bucks a year. Raise about 17 million, we could do it. They could purchase the property and give 4J a fair price, maybe not an inflated price, but a fair price for the property and make all of the repairs and keep it from being torn down. And I don't know about ongoing operations, but that would at least secure the property and do all of the repairs, so I'm going to pursue that idea. Thank you.
Mike?
I've thought about that as well. I think it's an interesting idea. I, too, want to say thank you to Susan Muir and wish her well and say that the folks in Mount Angel are quite lucky. I know that maybe more than others. I've called her with challenges from constituents and always been greeted with a smile, and I know, "Problem, we'll get right on that," and I really have really appreciated that very much. So we're going to miss you. Had the chance this last Monday, the first, to attend the ODOT Beltline Steering Committee meeting with Andrea, and we're now getting to the point where we're kind of looking at large 30,000-foot sort of potential footprint options and solutions for how to fix beltline between Coburg and River Road and some of the things that we can do to help the delta beltline intersection and try and come up with some planning that will ease the congestion and some of the safety issues there. The work is going quite well. I also appreciate the JEO format and what we were able to do this last time. Mayor and I have done a lot of work with the JEO Subcommittee on Economic Development to come up with what, you know, work with the staff. Done a fantastic job on regional economic planning for the long term, and I was very happy to see us get to a strong place of support to move that work forward. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow night in this room at 5:30 is the Police Commission, and we will be reviewing the final TASER policy recommendations and putting them forward to the chief through the Police Commission. And the council, as I understand it, may be weighing in on that as well, but we'll do that in its appropriate format at the Police Commission tomorrow night at 5:30.
Great. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items. One, also had a chance to attend the Rail Summit partly yesterday. Really was a great event, first one, and perhaps this will be an annual event. I hope so. And I want to express my thanks to Brenda and Jessica also. I know they put in a lot of hard work and a little bit of a new experience for both of them, but I thought it went really well. A reminder, we've talked about the Envision Eugene, the ECLAP process, and just to remind you that pretty fast, a lot's going on with that. You'll be engaged in what we hope are some interesting and new ways, but there's a lot of focus over the next six to 12 months in that. And so just kind of a little bit of reminder. If you have any items that you would like to include as a process session after we get back from break, please send those to Beth, and so we will do that. Homeless Connect, if you're -- you know, Richie would more than welcome your participation in any way that you want to. Please contact him, his extension 5533, or let me know, or Sarah, or Beth, and we'll make sure that you can get plugged into that. That's coming up on the 18th. Then I also want to just say thank you to Susan for what I think has been just a yeoman's work over the last couple of years that I've been here in what is really a difficult and complex position, particularly here in Eugene. I think she's navigated that very well. She's always been extremely supportive of me, which I find refreshing and nice, but she's also willing to be candid and be appropriate in that, and so I do appreciate that. And I know she'll do extremely well in her position, and one of the things that I do take pleasure in is when good people are able to move on and fulfill professional goals, even though it leaves a void here. I do think that's real positive and reflective of the organization. We also have another person that will be retiring, Becky Carlson. She'll be retiring this month as well and traveling the world, birding.[1177.15][1177.15](Laughter). They'll be doing that. But she's been a longtime employee with the city and I think also has done a wonderful job, particularly in the finance arena. One of the things that we've been very fortunate here is to have a solid financial history. And even though we're going through some really challenging times now, they would be much more difficult and stressful if we hadn't had some really positive work over the last many years. She's done some great work with that, so.
Especially on transportation.
Yes, very much on transportation.
Thank you for letting us know that, and we consider it a lost, but we understand that it probably sounds pretty good to Becky, so.[1215.83][1215.83](Laughter).
Yeah.[1217.83][1217.83](Laughter).
So we just want to -- I think on behalf of all of us, we just want to also say thank you to her for her service from the council because we know it's a big job, and we faced a lot of challenges. So let's give -- I hope she gets the feedback.[1235.83][1235.83](Applause). Before we get to our business, I just want to say a couple more things. One is I want you to know, if you don't know already, that ODOT, in terms of the rail conversation, they have purchased two new Talgo trains. So we are not just sitting still. We're moving.
Moving down the track.
Moving down the track.
Metaphors are funny.
And they are looking to this community for leadership on this. So you're going to be asked to take a stronger and stronger position in working on moving the rail issue along in this state. And they -- ODOT was very clear yesterday. They are expecting that from -- that kind of leadership from this community, maybe for the whole us pushing it for the state. So I just want to let you know that. And I wanted to tell Betty that I know Mark -- I might forget it.
Shonin.
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 Shonin has actually given an official response on the Crest issue, and I know he sent it out, but he could probably send it out again so that if you have somebody that needs to see that, that is that. I want to thank Representatives Nathanson, Byer, and Barnhart for participating in the Rail Summit. They bring a lot of power to the discussion. And I guess in -- just to close this out -- oh, and I wanted to say this. Mike, your discussion and Andrea on the Beltline, I think we need an update.
Okay.
Kind of some time to get up to speed because it'll be coming, and people are already positioning on MPC, and we really need to have a -- have an update and a discussion as a council.
Happy to.
And Homeless Connect, I hope everybody can participate in some way, little time, a lot of time. And the street repair thing, I think I heard that we did more than we've ever done this last summer, and we are going to do even more this summer.
Right, I think we may be doing a little bit more this summer, at least similar amount, so it'll be busy.
Right. So we're busy and trying to fulfill what we need to do for our community. Okay, Betty, did you have something you want to add?
Yes, I do, since you mentioned Mark Shonin. We have -- the Assessment Committee has been meeting, and Mark and Fred Bay have both done a great job, and Jennifer, George, and I are coming to agreement on several things, and we're finishing the work on April 15th, and we'll be bringing our recommendations back to council. It's been a really good committee, and the staff have been very helpful.
That's great. Good, good. Okay, we have two motions we're going to put out here for you that are not anything that you don't know about, but we need to move them.
I'm going to put Option 1 on the table. I move to allocate $3,500 from the Council Contingency Fund to support the Human Rights Community Summit on April 10, 2010, and request post-summit report with highlights and budget info.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Jennifer?
I'll, of course, support this, but I am frustrated that it's still last minute. So I would like them in the future to come to us more than 30 days in advance of their event.
George?
I just have a question. I was curious when I first heard about this request, as I don't know how much we have in the contingency fund every year.
Right now, we probably have $90,000 left. We spent $28,000 on the downtown public safety, and that was off of 90, so whatever 90 minus 28 is.
62.
62. Training in the contingency fund. So that's what -- so this would come out of that 62. I'm trying to remember what we had for the year. I'd have to check on that, but it's.
Okay. Yeah, no, I would just -- I just wanted a rough ballpark. I don't need to know exactly what it is. And does it get replenished every year, up to a certain ideal amount, like around 100 grand, or?
It does. What's happened is there's traditionally, there's been X amount. Last year, we reduced it because of the budget situation, and it was, I don't know, 125,000 kind of comes to mind, but it's plus or minus that kind of stuff.
So next year is $15. No.[1498.83][1498.83](Laughter).
Get your request in early.
That's possible.
Get your request in early.
So that's about 90,000 remaining before.
There's 60-something remaining before this item.
All right, are we ready? Betty?
I just wanted to say something about -- I will support this, but we've discussed the use of contingency fund before, and really, it was supposed to be for things that come up with city business that we didn't anticipate. And we have talked about whether we should do things like this, and people keep coming in asking for money for all sorts of good causes. So I think that's something we might discuss again at some point. Thanks.
Andrea?
Well, I wasn't going to speak to it because I know that we want to move on with other things, but this was part of our council goals, part of what we asked the community to do around one of -- around issues of race. And so to me, I don't disagree that they should come to us sooner, but I understand that, you know, there was some conversation earlier, and this is the way we ended up dealing with it, so that's fine. But this was something that we asked the community to do, so I think it's more than appropriate to fund it.
And unless I'm mistaken, this is done in conjunction with the Police Commission as well. It's been something that a lot of folks have been working on for a while.
Yeah, there's a list of the community members. I don't know if they have it here, but I'm sorry.
Okay, so all those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right.
Next motion.
Onward, yes. All right, next motion.
I move that the city send a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission supporting the request to designate the Beltline Highway in honor of Randall C. Pepe.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And I would only add to that, that this comes as a request from the governor, so just so you know that. Okay. All right. Any further conversation? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much. And now we'll go on about the business of the day, which is the Lane Community College Downtown Project. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just make a brief.
Excuse me, Mayor, before he starts with you.
Oh, excuse me. Yep. Got to get to the urban renewal district. Sorry. All right. I adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. Now we can talk about this. Thank you.
Just real briefly, and I'll turn over to Denny to do a quick presentation. As you know, this is just part of the 10th and Trunleton site. We've been working quite a bit with Mary Spielty over the last many months and trying to come up with what we think is a fair and reasonable proposal for moving forward on the acquisition of properties and to be supportive of both of their project and also believe that we can be responsible with a good steward of the resources that we've been entrusted with. And so with that balance, I'll turn it over to Denny.
Thank you. In January, Lane Community College President Spielty was here, and she provided an overview of their new downtown campus project, and the Urban Renewal Agency directed us to negotiate the terms for the sale of the 10th and Trunleton property to LCC so that they can continue to move forward with their project. We've been working with LCC on many levels. On Monday, you reviewed funding options for downtown projects and took action to initiate an urban renewal plan amendment that would include $8 million to help LCC fulfill their downtown campus project. We've also been working with LCC to help them secure the 10th and Trunleton site, and LCC has requested and we are recommending that the 10th and Trunleton property be transferred to LCC at no cost. And LCC's acquisition of the property at no cost clearly reduces the amount of funds that they will need to raise for the project, and it gets them that much closer to being able to break ground on the project. Keep in mind that the granting of the land does not reduce the $8 million that they have expressed as a need because their projected budget really never included a cost of land. We've also been working with LCC to remove other project barriers. One of the major project barriers involves the fate of their existing Willamette Street building. LCC has indicated that they don't have another use for the property after it's vacated, and they've also indicated that they would -- they really need to capture the value of that property now so that it can be put into the project and reliable -- become a reliable and timely source of funds to fund the construction of the new building. In other words, waiting to sell the property after the new building is under construction or after they vacated the property doesn't generate the upfront cash that they need to put in. to put into the construction of the new facility. Nor would the eventual sale price be known today, and those proceeds wouldn't be able to be counted on for the new construction project. And again, given the timing concern, you know, the amount of time it might take to sell that property is kind of unpredictable, especially in the economy that we're in right now. Additionally, LCC also shares our interest in a positive redevelopment opportunity for that existing Willamette Street site, and they've concluded that the Urban Renewal Agency would have a better chance of redeveloping, successfully redeveloping the property than they would. So given all of those considerations, LCC has requested, and we've recommended, that we commit to purchase the Willamette Street property for its appraised value of $1.2 million, with the caveat that the $1.2 million purchase price would be included in the $8 million that we've already committed to the project. So for example, if we purchase the property for $1.2 million, the maximum additional funds we would advance would be 6.8 million, for a total of $8 million. Also, LCC would continue to be allowed to occupy the building if we were to purchase it before it's vacated, and our commitment to purchase would only be valid, obviously, if they move forward with the project. And likewise, if they don't move forward with their project on the 10th and Charnelton site, within a mutually agreed time period, we would have the opportunity to recapture the 10th and Charnelton pri, property at no cost. Finally, we've also been working with LCC to help them complete a feasibility analysis, and we've been asked to participate in that process as a member of their steering committee that's been commissioned to work on feasibility. The group includes a project manager firm, Gertie Nedlund Development, an architect team, Robertson Sherwood and SRG Architects, several consultants that specialize in student housing, green building engineering and design, and several LCC staff. The feasibility report is nearing completion, and it's expected to be presented to the LCC Board on March 17th. The feasibility report will address a broad range of details, including a design concept specifically for the 10th and Charnelton site, and a detailed cost estimate for the project. The pace and the amount of work that this steering committee and this consultant team has prepared is very impressive. They've done a lot of work in basically a 90-day time period, and we'll make the full report available as soon as it becomes available to us for you to look at. What we know today is that they're proposing to build an 80,000 to 90,000 square foot state-of-the-art education building. They're targeting lead platinum for that building, and they want to create a building that teaches. The students and their nationally recognized energy management program would be able to interact with the green building features and systems, so they'd be looking at things like rainwater harvesting systems, solar panels, bio swales, natural heating and cooling systems, natural lighting systems, and they have extensive metering throughout the building so that the students could actually monitor how the building is performing on a daily They expect that this building would be, the education building would be utilized by thousands of students each year, and plus attract a lot of visitors because of its uniqueness and high-performance qualities. Addition to the education building, they're also looking at the feasibility of incorporating 200 units of student housing into the project, I'm sorry, 200, it'd actually be 200 beds included in a student housing for the site. And when you look at the new education building, the library, the transit station, student housing, all of those together really have the opportunity to not only transform the area, but fill a vacant hole downtown that we've been trying to address for many years. Today, what we're asking the agency to do is to take two actions. First is to approve, advance of the 10th and Charnelton site to LCC at no cost, or $1, based on the revised outline of terms and amended motion that you received from the city attorney yesterday, and I believe that you have that in front of you. And secondly, to commit to purchasing LCC's Willamette Street property at a cost of $1.2 million, which again would be included as part of the proposed $8 million agency participation in their project. Those two actions would give LCC the site control they need, and the certainty regarding the sale of their existing site, so that they can move into the next two phases of the project, which include finalizing the project funding, finalizing the building design, construction drawings, permitting, and construction beginning next year, with the goal of having occupancy in time for the 2013 fall school year.
I know that sounds fast, but not fast enough. Okay, Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Denny, that was pretty comprehensive. I just, so I guess I just will reiterate what you said, because I don't have any questions. I think you were pretty thorough in your presentation. So they basically needed to do this to make it happen, the, us purchasing of the property.
Yes, and to stay on schedule, it's real important that, because they have sold bonds and they are looking for stimulus dollars, that they stay on a tight schedule to make sure that they get this project done, so they're able to stay on the timeline that they're currently on, if we're able to help them through this acquisition process, yes.
I made a statement earlier at this table, that I think we should do whatever we can to make sure this happens, and so I'm just going to let it go at that, but I just, I'm just a little challenged, because I feel like, it's a good, I mean, I can see rationally why we're doing this, and I'm glad that we're getting some real estate out of it, because we're giving some real estate away, and we are being fiscally responsible in trying to make sure that we are accomplishing a lot of goals, plus trying to keep a little bit for the city, but it, I just, I just wonder if they could get, if it would have been a better idea to have it on the open market for people to purchase, you know, another business, you know, somebody who has a vision for down there, but then I think about the other projects that didn't come through, so, you know, we're at this pass, and so good work, thanks a lot, and look forward to hopefully...
Can I just make a quick comment on that? Could I, I think where you are is also where I would be, the difficult part is just the timing. It's just purely a timing issue of putting it out on the open market with an expectation right now to sell the piece of property, and that's where Denny talks about, is keep on schedule, it's a cash flow issue for them at that point, so, yeah.
I've got Mike, and George, and Betty, and Jennifer, and Alan in queue. Just before that, I'd just like to say, I can, I can understand the reluctance too, but I also understand the timing and needing to move things along at a certain pace, and that this can help us do that. The point that I would like to make to the public that are listening to this or thinking about this, is I see this as sort of a public-public partnership, in that we're achieving with LCC goals that we want for the community, in terms of education opportunities and job training for thousands of students, a development that we need to have happen in our downtown, job opportunities, green energy, an energy center, housing, all of those things are things that we have expressed as council goals. So I don't see this as doing a favor. I see this as achieving goals that we've set out in front of us, in partnership, fortunately, with Lane Community College. Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Andrea, like the mayor, I too am absolutely committed to the idea that LCC Downtown is the right, right, exact right project in the exact right place. And I'm willing to accept the tax increment financing option that we accepted the other night, even though that's not a big plus for me, because I want to see it done. But I must tell you, different from Andrea, I'm concerned about us acquiring more real property at a time where I think the city should be divesting itself a surplus property. I think we should be using those resources in a better way. I'm one who, as I recall, we made a motion about that during last year's Budget Committee meeting, to analyze the surplus property that the city had for perhaps using those assets in a better way. Now, I'm uncomfortable as well with the city getting further into the development business. I'm not exactly sure that we've developed, nothing against the staff's work, they've done a great job, but the city as an entity has a difficult time, in my opinion, being effective in that business, and I'm not sure that us looking then to try and come up with a new project in a new place is the wisest thing for us to be doing as an entity, so I'm concerned about that. And then, the $1.2 million number being encapsulated in the motion here, I'm also uncomfortable with, and will have an amendment for, because I, if we're going to put that number in there, it leaves us no room for negotiation, and as I understand it, there are people of different opinions about that value number. Now, certainly, we would want to adjust our help to them to make sure we get to the $8 million number that they need to stay on track, but as far as our purchasing that asset for that price, I'm not certain that's wise, because I think that locks us into a position where it's more difficult for us to sell it, if that's what we're going to do after the fact, or to try and help another development if we've paid too high a price for it upfront. So I suppose when it gets there, I'll make the, I would offer the amendment that we put some kind of language in there, like, for no more than $1.2 million, but with an absolute direction that we'll want to relook at that number and negotiate for the lowest one that is possible. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you. Well, I'm all for the first part of this motion, selling them the property for a dollar. It is an absolutely terrible idea for the city to spend $1.2 million on this property. It's classic Urban Renewal Agency tactic. You buy, it's a toxic asset that the city doesn't need. Look, there's, we have a list of, it's almost two pages in fine print, of property that we're trying to sell. Nobody wants to buy it. Who's going to buy that building? Who's going to pay $1.2 million for it, except Urban Renewal Agency? Nobody would. Look at the Connor and Woolley property on West Broadway. A whole half-block of usable buildings sold for $1 million. I think it was valued at $3 million. That's how much the Urban Renewal Agency was going to pay Connor and Woolley for it. But when it was left on the private market, it sold for a million. I guarantee you, nobody's going to pay $1.2 million for this building. This, is the city acquiring another toxic asset? I think it's a terrible mistake. I think that's up to, I want LCC to make, to complete this project too, but this is just really foolhardy, because nobody will buy that from the Urban Renewal Agency at that price. It's classic tactic. We'll hold on to it for years, and we'll give it away to somebody for pennies on the dollar, or we will demolish the building and have another pit, and then end up giving it away for a dollar to somebody else 10 or 20 years from now. So I, the second part of the motion, if we could split these, I'd support the first part. The second part, there's no way, I think it's an absolutely terrible idea. It's a terrible mistake, and I just absolutely cannot support it. It's really foolish, and it's just, the results will be predictable, I feel. Thanks.
Okay.
George said a lot of what I was going to say. I will support giving them the Sears property. I don't think we should buy this and have another empty building that we own downtown. But as for helping them to ensure that they can go ahead, that was the purpose of my motion on Monday, to come up with funding methods that would not be contested, and would not be delayed, so that they could be sure that they could go ahead. As it is, it isn't sure, because if there is a referendum, what does happen if there's, if people get the signatures for a referendum? Doesn't everything have to stop at that point? I'm asking the attorney.
If, it depends on what you mean by, does everything have to stop? Until the urban renewal plan amendment is approved, if there's a referendum, then the plan amendment does not go into effect, winds up on the ballot, and then we wait to see what the voters...
So they can't proceed with their plans?
They can proceed with their plans, they wouldn't have available to them the $8 million that the council included in that urban renewal plan amendment.
Which they said they depend on to proceed, right?
I haven't talked to LCC, I don't know whether Denny or Susan can answer that part.
But we're talking about giving them this extra money, so that they are sure of being able to proceed. If the, all the other money is held up, I assume that they wouldn't be able to proceed then.
I think that's a discussion that President Spielty would have with their board, but the assumption is that they would not start to spend serious money as, in the second phase of design and so forth, until they have some assurance that they have site control, and they have some assistance from the city to help close that funding gap, so there would be a delay in the best-case scenario, I guess.
As long as we're depending on urban renewal, there's likely to be a delay, so I don't see why we'd be rushing to buy this building, even if we wanted to buy it. Thank you.
I just want, before I call, Jennifer, I just want to clarify something, because I thought I heard something. The proposal for the $1.2 is not in addition, it is part of the $8 million request, I just wanted to clarify. It doesn't add any more to it. Okay, Jennifer?
Okay, wow, this was really the first I'd heard of this. I had been told all along that LCC was planning to retain the Willamette Street property, and they hadn't quite decided what they were going to do with it, but they were going to keep it. And so when I saw this, I was pretty stunned. I was just so excited that we were going to get out of the downtown development business, because we're getting rid of the 10th and Charnelton site, and Beam's going to do something, and then we can wash our hands of all of this and be done with it. And now I feel like we're adding on another project, and I guess my question is, if, so let's just say we do this LCC purchase of the Willamette Street property, you know, we're not going to have any money to do anything with it, because with this URA amendment that we're going out for, we've already earmarked the money, and it doesn't include anything for this particular piece of property. So I really need to feel, I need some more information about the plan. What's the plan for this piece at Willamette Street? I don't really want us to be in possession of that, but if we are going to be in possession of it, I need to know more about what we're going to do with it. I also, I just, I don't agree with the mayor's comments about this being a public-public partnership. I mean, it is, it will be that, but that is not the purpose of urban renewal. Urban renewal is to increase the private tax dollars that will then go on the tax rolls and then come back to the city. This is going to be a public entity, they will not pay taxes on their property, and so it's not really in the, it's not true, being true to urban renewal. So that's where I am right now. Alan?
Oh, wait, I have one more question.
Yes?
Does the LCC Willamette Street property, is that part of the steam heat buildings? Is that one of those that has to be converted? And do we then also get to take care of that issue?
One of the things you'll see in the deal points is that there still needs to be some due diligence on each side. They need to look at our site to make sure it meets their needs, and we need to look at their building before, you know, environmental issues and all those issues, before we would fully commit, so that is a, that is a condition of our commitment, so it's some of the things that we'll look at, is what kind of environmental exposure we have and so forth.
Okay, thanks. Alan?
So, I don't disagree about selling it right now, but the reason we're in this, we're doing this right now, is because we tried to sell this right now, and the people that we picked to work on this backed out because of the economy, so I don't see this anything with this property for years, unless we do this job. So I think it's great that it's a lead platinum building, I think it'd be the first lead platinum building in Eugene, in Springfield. I think it's great that there's housing for 200 students, that's perfect, that's what we need downtown. I think the Energy Management School being there is exactly what, and it became a demonstration project. The other thing about this is if this were a private development, they would be turning around and asking for MUPD. And since they're not asking for MUPD, because they can't, because they're a public agency and they're tax exempt, they can't get that benefit that we would give to any private developer, so this is, I don't know if they equate, but this is in lieu of that in my mind. Second, so if I understand this correctly, the first part of this is a sale regardless of urban renewal funding for a dollar.
Correct.
But we have the repurchase option to take it back if they don't move forward with the project.
Correct.
Okay, so we're held harmless if they don't move forward. The second part of it is contingent on funding for, from the urban renewal plan.
But it's, maybe you can probably answer that better.
Says the URA's obligation to purchase this is, will be contingent upon URA's approval of necessary supplemental budget.
Right, and so if LCC came to the city and said, "We are ready for you to purchase our building," then staff would come to you, acting as the URA board, and say, "LCC would like the city to, or the agency to purchase." Here, depending on when that happens, here are the options in terms of funding, are you willing to do it, and if so, then you would be asked to approve a supplemental budget. So if you approve the motion today, what you're really doing is directing the manager, he can go negotiate the property transaction agreement, but the city could not, the manager could not execute that agreement and actually purchase without coming back to the URA and asking you to approve a supplemental budget, and at that time, we could say, "Okay, given where, what happened with the urban renewal plan amendment, here's the possible funding. If that didn't happen, here's the possible funding." But it's contingent on funding from the Urban Renewal Agency.
So if the Urban Renewal Agency had no money, and we couldn't purchase this property... So, if the Urban Renewal Agency had no money and we couldn't purchase this property for a million too, and our plan falls apart, would we be obligated to buy this property anyway?
No.
So, this is contingent on funding?
This is contingent on the council deciding that there is funding available and-
From the Urban Renewal-
From the Urban Renewal Agency and your discretionary approval of a supplemental budget. The agreement, the actual property transaction agreements will contain a provision in it that says the agency has no obligation to purchase unless this board approves a supplemental budget and that's a discretionary decision for you.
And we wouldn't do that unless we had the money from the Urban Renewal District. At least I wouldn't. So, in, so that makes me feel more comfortable. In the end, what LCC is requesting for us and what we're offering up is 8 million dollars. That's their, that's their gap. So, in this case, we're going to either give them 8 million dollars and get nothing, or we're going to give them 8 million dollars and get a piece of property. And I'd rather have the second option, which is we get something for it. At least we get this real estate. And if we did turn around and sell it to a private, if LCC keeps it, it stays off the tax rolls and it never adds anything to the Urban Renewal District as long as that's in place. But if it were to be sold and to a private developer and they developed it, then that would add to the tax increment for the Urban Renewal District. And when the Urban Renewal District goes away, to the taxes for the entire community, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, in that case, I kind of look at this as a little bit of a, it's like a bonus. We're going to, we've obligated, we've said we'd give them 8 million dollars and we're either going to get property or we're not going to get property. And in the end, from that perspective, if we don't, if we don't, if we give it away for a dollar to somebody to develop, that's fine, me too.
Chris?
Interesting discussion. I'm sensing there are enough people here who are nervous about the purchase that we may want to break the motion up into two pieces. Because I think it's critical that we pass the certainty. Because one of these swirling elements is they've got to have certainty at the old Sears site. And so, we've got to pass something today that gives them certainty and I don't think they have to be necessarily connected. Like Alan is saying, one of the things that we're taking as a, as a kind of a matter of accepted fact is that we want to help them. We want to help them get the place built there and that's probably going to take somewhere in the neighborhood of 8 million dollars. And exactly the configuration for how that 8 million works could, may still be something that we need to have ongoing discussion around, but something that would be important to me is give them site certainty, because that sounds like a critical element. And two, make sure they understand we will, some way or another, get them the money they need to build. But I'm sensing that there's still some conversation that needs to occur about the Willamette Street site. Do we want it? Do we not want it? Will it be useful? Will it not be useful? So, for me, it's important that we pass the site, the first part. I think we need to make sure they understand that we are committed to getting them their resources to build that building, whether or not it includes the purchase of the Willamette Street site. So, if we can't, if we can't pass that piece today, or if there's not support for passing that piece today, I'd like to continue to talk about what we might be able to do, but still continue on the path that we're going to get them the resources they need to get that building built. Because I want to try to get done what we can get done and then keep talking about what we can't seem to get through today.
So, is your, I've got you on this. Is it, is your sense that the reason they want us to take on that building as part of the 8 million because they don't, I heard that they thought we were in a better position to deal with it, but is it also because they, of extra expense in, of selling that building? I know they had to stay in it for the next two years while the Sears site is being built. So, I understand that part.
They're looking for certainty on two things. One is control of the 10th and Charnelton site so that they know that, again, when they start to spend serious money on design and architecture and all that, that they have site control. And two, their board, when President Spildy talked to their board about the property transaction, there was a lot of concern expressed about the future of the existing property. So, they're looking for certainty regarding what happens there. And I think what Counselor Brown expressed were some of the same things that she heard from her board. You know, how are we ever going to get 1.2 million dollars for this property in this economy? And it may take forever to sell it and we don't have a use for it and all of those things. So, again, you know, we're creating certainty and removing a barrier and that barrier is how do we get that, the value of that property into this new project so that we can help close a funding gap? And so, by putting that 1.2 million in now, it creates some certainty for them. So, I think they're actually looking for certainty on both of the properties, not just one of them.
Still a little confusing to me because I see that we're obligating ourselves, if we do, to the eight anyway. So, they're getting the, if this moves forward, they're getting the eight so that they have certainty about that. And they're not getting any more if they give us the, if we take the property because that's part of the eight. So, so then it's, yes, City Manager?
Go ahead.
No, I'm just trying to understand. I understand they want to, I mean, okay, let's just say there's an albatross in a room and they don't want it and they'd like it if we had it. Well, and we have to decide whether we see any advantage to us having it other than us taking a load off of them. I, I see that, but I'm trying to wrestle with-
The way I, this is sort of how I kind of work through it in my mind. Jennifer, I'm with you also that I don't think we generally want to be in the business of developers in the downtown as part of our Urban Renewal piece of that. So, given that, part of it then is a little bit of who has the ability to sort of carry the asset longer, sort of accumulate those carrying costs. And they may not be particularly tangible or not. And so, the question is, is that in the context of LCC being able to move forward on their project, part of it's a little bit of a cash flow for them to be able to cash flow the parts for them to go forward. It's an asset that they have, piece of property, that does have value. The value today will be different than the value tomorrow, which will be different than the value in a year. And so, I think as an Urban Renewal Agency, we probably have the ability to carry that asset a little bit longer than they do because we don't necessarily need the cash out of it right away to do the project. So, that's part of how I kind of take a look at that. And one other piece I wanted to talk about.
I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
I've got, next round is George and Mike and Alan. George?
Okay. Am I correct in, and I think I saw somewhere where they want us to buy this, their property, their current property, and then they want us to be the landlords while they're still in there for a year or two and lease it to them?
Well, I think the, the deal points basically indicate that they would lease it some nominal amount, which basically means we would just allow them to stay in the property until they vacate it.
That makes it even worse because we purchased a toxic asset. I mean, it's just a toxic, it's pure poison for the city. It's a totally worthless asset for the city. It will only deteriorate, we'll sell it for a million, you know, pennies on the dollar or given away. But now we become landlords and they get to stay there for free, but somehow, now that we give them a million point two, now we have to pay all the utilities and now we're responsible for the insurance and all the other expenses of being landlords and running the building? I mean, I don't, I guess I don't get that. And they will pay a nominal rent?
That's to be negotiated and our assumption would be that they maintain the operating costs of insurance and utilities and all that as long as, like they are now, as long as they occupy the building.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, it's just a terrible idea. I mean, the Urban Renewal funds are supposed to be used to build stuff, not, you know, their feasibility reports are going to be due a week from now. Seven days. Why don't we wait seven days and see what Gerting Edlund say? You know, you might just be surprised if they hear these deliberations, they might just be able to trim that 8 million dollar gap down a little bit. Because typically, when you do a big project like this, the developer, the contractor will present several, a range to the client of like, this is Plan A. This is the Cadillac plan, you know, and here's the, here's the SUV plan. And here's, here's the other one. It's not just one thing. There's going to be a whole range. And I just think it would just be a terrible mistake for the city to purchase this property.
You want to see something?
Yeah, I remembered my other piece on this thing. One is, is remember, I would say strictly from a private business sector financial deal, they would not enter into this deal, right? If you're strictly a private developer, you're not going to do that because, but part of what we have said as a city organization is we want to support their project and we're willing to put taxpayer dollars into the project with some sense of return on our investment. The return on the investment is much less financial than it is the return on investment around vitality, jobs, economic development, all those kinds of things. And so, if we're, if we're looking for a financial return on our investment, this isn't the deal that's going to get that. But if we're looking for a return on investment back to the community on some other kinds of things, this is one opportunity and a way to get to that kind of return on investment. So, I think it just depends on how we want to view the investment that we're making.
Well, I understand, I appreciate that. And that's why I'm going to support the first part of, of, you know, the motion. I'm all, I'm, hey, they can have it for free. We don't need to charge them a dollar. They can just have it. I'm all for that. That's beautiful. It's the second part. It's like, this is not an investment to me. This is, this is just throwing money away. It's not, it's not, it's just, why don't we just shove it down a gopher hole? Because we're going to hang on to that building for years. We're in a worldwide economic crisis. There's, nobody's going to buy that building. We can make the project go forward. What I'm trying to say is we can make this project go forward and I sincerely want to and we will. Sooner or later, we will find a way to make this happen, but this is just absolutely the wrong way to do it. And I just have to think of a better, a better way because it's just crazy to buy the property for 1.2 million dollars.
So, we are at 1 o'clock and we want to get a motion on the table. I've got four people in the queue, so just wanting to let you know that we're going to need to put some motion out there pretty soon here. All right. So, I'm going to go to George. He just came. Welcome, George. And he hasn't entered first round, so I'm going to go to him and then I'll come back.
I apologize for being late and I want to thank my chief of staff for putting the phone close to the television at home. I was able to catch part of the conversation on the way in. My understanding is, is that we're discussing the new proposal and that there was some discussion about splitting the motion. Okay. You know, I absolutely agree that this is the right project for the location down there. I absolutely agree that LCC is the right thing to do. It's going to, it's going to encourage other activity, other development with all the housing and everything else that they're planning. I still am a little bit iffy at best on the second part of the motion. I think it's time that the city starts getting out of the real estate business. I think we're just, we're trading a pit for an old building, I think, in this, in this motion. But if that's the, you know, if we do split the motion up, I think that, at this point, that's the way I'm leaning right now to vote. I don't know if this is going to be a deal breaker or not. I hope it isn't. But, you know, I still think investing the 8 million to help LCC with this project, if that's what they need total, is the right way to go. So, at this point, I'll just kind of sit back for a little bit and listen to the rest of the conversation.
All right, Mike?
Yeah. So, the 8 million dollars is the gap. This 1.2 is to take a portion of that gap, right?
Correct.
So, if we're going to say, "We understand 8 million dollars. We're willing to give you that 8 million dollars, then the project has no encumbrances." Have I got that right?
Correct. We'll talk about-
Okay, hold on for a second then. Here's my challenge. The mayor thought, the mayor thought, the mayor said something while Alan, that I wrote down while Alan was speaking, that, you know, when he said he, you know, "We're going to give them the 8 million dollars and get nothing," or "We're going to give them the 8 million dollars and get something." Well, I think that the something is a 1.2 million dollar albatross and I'm not interested. And I think that at the very, very least, there are several questions around whether or not we have a steam long-term liability conversion to deal with, whether or not there's other issues in that building that create liabilities for the city that we don't know making a decision today. So, I'm going to say that I think we should not say no to the one, to the, to the purchase of that building per se, but we certainly don't have enough information to make that decision today. And I think we should say, we want to, I would like to put forward that we'll, we'll move the first part of the motion and ask for you to come back with the second part with further information so that we can reanalyze that deal with the guarantee that we're interested in, in filling their 8 million dollar gap. So, the project has some certainty to it, but we're not getting into a liability that may be a problem for us later down the road. And as I said in the first round, I'm not interested in us being in the development business anymore. And I don't want to see us take on another long-term project that is going to have another reason to extend the Urban Renewal District down the road. So, I guess with that, I'll put the motion on the table, move to authorize, and, oh, I'm sorry, one other question. This says that it authorizes the manager to enter into an agreement. So, I heard Glenn say the agreement has to come back for final ratification, or no?
No. The, what I was talking about, that would come back to the council or come back to the Urban Renewal Agency Board was the supplemental budget. So, that would just be for the purchase of their property.
Okay. Because it doesn't say that in the recommended emotion.
No, but it, what the recommended motion does is it refers to the terms and conditions in the revised-
All right. Which has that in it. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, then I'll move to authorize the agency director to enter into an agreement with LCC consistent with the terms and conditions included in the revised attachment C dated March 10, 2010, to sell the 10th and Charnelton property to LCC at no cost or for $1.
Second?
I'll make the other motion in a minute.
So, I guess the question I have for Glenn and Denny and whoever is, I know that the reason you brought forward that second part was be, I know I've used the albatross word, but nonetheless, I know that you felt that that was part of the, of the deal. And so, I understand the concern council has and I think it's a legitimate concern. I'm just wondering about the, again, the timing issue on this in terms of the, your conversation with LCC.
I think partly it's going to depend a little bit on what's the second motion. Because maybe when we get to the second motion, we'll talk about that 8 million. I know we've said we've committed 8 million. The 8 million is not in the bank for them. I mean, we have, you know, we talk about that. We have talked about it will get referred to the voters. It may or may not get referred and we don't know the answer to that if it does get referred. So, the 8 million, what I think the council is committed to is we want to increase the cap on the Urban Renewal District by 8 million to pay for this project. That is not in the bank at this moment. And so, it's not a guaranteed 8 million, so.
But it's as close to the bank as we can get right now.
Absolutely. And so, so I think we're just weighing it. So, part of it's going to, I think, depend on what the second motion is, is maybe we-
All right. I just wanted to tie that.
Mayor, to, just for clarification, when I said consistent with attachment C, I meant the portions that deal with this, not the second bullet point that deals with the selling of this building, just for legislative intent.
All right. Alan?
And our commitment is up to 8 million, depending on what they need, which really goes back to the report they're going to get back from the ruling.
Right.
And if it's 7.1, it's 7.1. If it's 6.8, it's that, right?
Yes.
So, it's dependent. So, it's up to. So, let me ask you two questions. If we do this deal with the property, how much will we give LCC?
Up to?
Up to 8 million.
If we did the deal without the property, how much would we give LCC?
Up to 8 million.
And so, the issue is this property. So, there's also bullet number four on the second part of this is very critical here. It says, "Real estate transaction will be contingent on due diligence, including environmental due diligence." I think it's very premature to people to call it an albatross or a toxic asset. We don't know anything about this building in reality. We have just begun to look at it. So, it may be a good deal. It may not be a good deal. I don't know, but that due diligence is what we need to do. I don't mind splitting the vote.
We already do.
And I'll support the first one for sure. And the second one, maybe we need to sit on it for a while, but I don't have a problem with that because of that, voting on it right now because of this bullet. This bullet says that we're going to go look at this, look at the- at the, the environmental issues around it, including the, the steam plant needs and anything else that we need to look at. That will be brought back to us. That's the due diligence we need to do on this building. Then we decide. This is, in my, my correct this is, this isn't a done deal. We still have a lot of decisions to go forward before we do there.
Right.
It doesn't give them that much more certainty, but it allows us, this is kind of like buying an option to purchase, but we need to go figure out if it's a good deal or not. And that's all we're doing. We're not buying it today. That's really clear. We're not buying this building today. We're, we're securing the option to look at the purchase of it. And again, they're going to get their $8 million this way or that way. It's whether or not what we end up.
Point of order.
I'm skeptical too that we, that we be in the, the real estate development business, but if it's, if it's an interesting building for us, I have my doubts, but I'd like to learn more about it. So I think what this motion does is allow us to go get that information and tie up this option.
Jennifer?
Well, my comments were to the second bullet, not the motion.
Okay. And you want to wait?
Students.
All right. Andrea?
Same here.
Okay. All right. So we're voting on the motion. All those in favor? Eight in favor, none in opposition. It passes. Second motion.
My move that the city manager come back to council as soon as is possible with a complete report on the deal for this building as a separate item so that once we have the report and we have it to consider on its own merit.
Seconded. You have any comments on that?
That's where the will of the council is, so.
I guess I'm just still wrestling a little bit with, does it, I heard what Alan said, I heard what I said. But what I'm wrestling with is, does it put, not dealing with it today, does it put anything in jeopardy? That is, that's.
I, I don't know this. I would assume that LCC will hold, I think they will mark time until they have certainty. So I don't know that. I don't know that for sure, but I.
Okay. Jennifer?
Okay, well, I, I appreciate that we're asking to have a longer, better, more productive discussion at a later date. As part of that discussion, I really think we need another appraisal of the value of the property from an independent third party. I, I need to know what sort of a plan we would have for unloading this property. I need a commitment that we aren't going to unload the property to another public entity. I need a commitment that it will actually go to private ownership. I, I can't believe that that site would be so difficult to unload. It is a prime location. It's on a corner spot in downtown. I just, I'm not convinced that LCC has actually really explored selling it. And, and what would it look like if we had it? I just can't believe that it would be that difficult to sell. I don't think the market's that bad for a prime location like that. So I, I need a plan and I need just more information before I can pass this. And if, and if you are suggesting that we pass this today, then I will have to vote no on it today.
Well, what I, what I heard was with this motion is that we would, we would come back with the due diligence piece. Part of that could be some of that planning. Back to the council at the earliest time we can do that.
Denny, did you have?
I would just clarify that there has been a recent appraisal as part of this negotiating process and the appraise value is 1.2 million and that's based on a reasonable, within the last two months.
But who did it? Was it a city, was the city guy appraised it?
Duncan and Brown.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a little concerned about the, what the conversation that I hear at the table. I don't necessarily 100% disagree that we shouldn't be in the real estate business, but my concern is that if this, if they need to unload that building or sell it to have a lower debt ratio, to get the financing that they need to continue on their path, that's my concern about not moving forward today. Because I know there's, we'll find balancing act that public entities go through in trying to obtain the amount of money that they need through whatever asset, whatever avenues they're doing and that they only can have a certain amount of debt ratio. And so that, that is my concern about not doing that today. Because I would support us, support, you know, your, your direction. John, I was going to call you Dennis for a minute there.
Remember what happened to him?
Yeah.
That's good.
I guess I should just keep.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, so I, you know, I, I see what's happening here. I'm not, not going to support the motion because it isn't, it isn't what I want. I'm not offering a substitute motion because I don't think it would pass at this point in time because I can hear what people are saying. But I'm a little concerned about, about our ability to make, to reinforce the fact that we do want LCC downtown. I know a lot of people say it, but this is, you know, one of those little steps that, you know, can be perceived in different ways. And so I'm just a little concerned about it. But it's the will of the council. It's the will of the council.
Denny, do you have something else you want? Nope. Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I, like Andrea, I don't want to do anything that puts this opportunity in jeopardy. And I certainly don't want LCC to mark time, as you said. But I got to tell you, I really don't understand, and I haven't heard anybody say, why they would mark time. We've just said, we want them to go forward. We were going to give them the $8 million they need to do it. Why in the world would they mark time? Help me understand this.
David, I'll try not to answer for them. And this is, I'm surmising, again, partly what?
Is there anybody here from LCC?
Yeah.
Yeah, you sure you want to raise your hand?
Is it the liability of this building?
I think what we've heard from LCC and their board is that, and it's, it's the same concerns that you have, is that they don't want to be in the, in the real estate business and they don't want to be faced with the task of trying to make something happen with this building. And they could be stuck with this building for a long time. And they would like to eliminate that uncertainty. And I, I understand that.
But that doesn't keep them from proceeding with the plan because what they need with the plan is the $8 million funding gap. And we're saying, we'll do that. So why would it keep them from moving forward?
They may want a solution for the property before they, before they move forward with their existing site because, you know, for many reasons, they don't want to get attached to their name and reputation, probably doesn't want to get attached to a vacant building that stays vacant downtown for five or 10 years.
Well, here's the thing. I must tell you, we've been in that position for a while and I'm not in.
That's what we've heard, that's what we've heard from their board.
But what I'm, what I'm interested in is if there's an opportunity for us to go back and do a little bit more work and come up with a plan where the city does buy it, but here's the plan for how we deal with it and move it along quickly and it passes through us quickly, I'm fine with that. But what I don't want us to be in the position in is having another pit in downtown Eugene or having a vacant building.
We don't either.
I don't want to be in that position. So we just need a little bit more before we get there. But I don't want to hold LCC up at all.
So, so I think what, if the motion passes, we will do the due diligence as soon as we can, be able to come back to the council. We will of course talk with LCC and get their read on that. Our intent would be is to come back as soon as we can. So the council will be have an opportunity to vote on that.
And I think we've been really clear that we all want this. Okay. Brad, you're, okay. So Chris, did you have something to add before we vote?
Yeah. I'm actually encouraged by the discussion right now because we're dealing with public money. And I think it's good to watch people be very cautious and thoughtful with, with public money. Every single person at this table wants the LCC project to proceed. And we want to commit the money to make it succeed, even if we don't have it in the bank right now. We're willing to work to try to get it in the bank. What we need a piece of property to make that work, I think, is what's really the conversation. And I can understand LCC's reluctance to be in the real estate business any more than us, but there's really no value in transferring their, their nervousness to become our nervousness. We can try to make this happen without anybody having to be nervous, if that's possible. I just keep flashing back to you sitting in the little room and they keep coming back and telling you, well, the price is actually, can you go this high? It's negotiating. It's what we do. And so I'm thinking we're moving down the road at a reasonable pace. We've gotten done the most important piece today, which I think is good. And I think if, if you come back to us with a little more robust discussion about the rest of it, I am absolutely confident we can get there. We just want to get there in a way that everybody will be comfortable with. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Daddy?
I won't vote for this because I'm not in favor of buying the property, even if we, and so I won't vote for doing, putting money into it. As for delaying what we, what we've already done, having it depend on expanding urban renewal, will end up delaying the project. Thank you.
George?
Yeah, I, there's no way we should buy this building. I don't care. There's just, the only way would be like if, if someone wants to buy it right now and they can come forward and tell us that. And then I might support it. But I, I want to thank you for breaking it up and I appreciate the intent, but it still involves purchasing the property and I just cannot support that. So I'll probably vote against it.
Well, I want to be clear about the motion that's on the table. The motion that's on the table does not, it doesn't tell that you're going to purchase it. I want to be clear about that.
It's information.
It's information.
Bring back some more information.
Another discussion.
Okay. All right. Seen no one else? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Seven in favor and opposition one, it passes. All right. I don't believe we're going to be talking about goals today.
I think we won't.
Again, I apologize for missing the first meeting. One thing real quick is last week was the grand opening of the Traveling County's Gateway Adventure Center over Beltline Gateway area. And it was great turnout. There's estimated 300 people there for the grand opening. And then the second thing and the most important thing that I, I hope everybody had a chance, time to read the memo, the Oregon Transportation Commission has started a process to rename highway.
We voted on it.
We voted on it.
Oh, you did?
We did. Yeah, we voted to send them a letter.
Well, I appreciate that and thank you very much.
All right. I close the Urban Renewal District.
We got out early, Mayor, just not quite.